Next to us, they quite often get picked up.
Lights are on.
Okay. I would like to call
Reporting in progress.
The Newton Planning Board Public Meeting to Order at 7:01 on August 9, 2022. I'd like to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
So I'd like to call the
Just so you know, this is Annie on the phone.
Hi, Annie.
Hi. My computer's down.
Hopefully, that's a little bit better. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:03 on August 9, 2022. The first thing on the agenda, I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback, is Kelly McCarthy of Newton, New Hampshire requested a public hearing for a minor site plan for adding some horse stables at 45 Highland Street, Newton, Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 5, Block 4, Lot 18-2. Ms. Rowden, do you have anything to add?
Sure.
I know that this was, the applicant came to us about a month ago to request a, I guess, a, yeah, we didn't grant the waiver at that point. However, they request feedback from us to, or guidance on how to apply for this application.
Yep, so Ms. McCarthy came in for
Should be unlocked.
So Ms. McCarthy came in for a consultation to proceed about what to do, what she should apply for, for her application. Based on the application that was submitted and what was discussed at that design review, it seemed that what she was proposing, which is a private barn, because of the size of it would normally trigger a major site plan. It was recommended from the Planning Board, and what Ms. McCarthy applied for, that she asked for a waiver potentially for the major site plan requirements, which she has done and does appear reasonable, but because, and she needed to do that because of the size of the proposal being greater than 2,000 square feet in size. By asking for that waiver, the application would be complete. If you agree with that recommendation, that that waiver is reasonable to be granted, then she can apply under the minor site plan requirements, which I did review it based on the minor site plan requirements. It does seem complete based on those requirements, and other than two fairly minor recommendations, just to confirm that it's intended for private use, as acknowledged in Ms. McCarthy's letter, and that best management practices are used for the manure storage, and just having that be a condition, those are my only recommendations on this application. And it does appear complete, presuming that you find the waiver reasonable. So you'll have to take up jurisdiction first, then deal with the waiver. If you grant that, then you can proceed with the minor site plan.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll motion to take jurisdiction.
We want to make the waiver first, right?
No, so the applicant, because of the waiver, the application is complete. She asks for a waiver from the entire major site plan requirement.
She's already been given the waiver?
She has submitted the waiver with her application. She hasn't been given the waiver, she's submitted the waiver request. Because of that, her application is complete.
Okay.
I know that's really technical, but
Yeah.
You might want to hear from her first, though, as an overview of the application.
And we are in.
Sure, just for the record, if you would like to come to the podium, state your name and your intent for this application, thank you.
Not that tall. So, as I said about a month ago, I'm looking to build a small, private barn. The, I guess I didn't print the letter, but basically, it's a 36 by 60 barn. It's going to have six stalls, it's for my own private use. It's in the middle of the 26 and 1/2 acres, so it's not near anyone or anything, realistically, not within probably 500 feet of any house. And, yeah, looking, looking to build it this fall.
Thank you. Now, would you prefer us to take jurisdiction and then ask questions, if we have questions?
I mean, that's up to you guys.
I've got a motion to take jurisdiction.
I'll second.
I'd like to second that motion.
Sorry, Annie, we're having a hard time hearing you, but right now, the motion on the floor to take jurisdiction, or there's a motion on the floor to take jurisdiction, I should say.
And it was seconded.
And it was seconded. Roll call, Jim, please.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mrs. Littleboy is not here. Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Does the board have any questions?
The only questions I had, just to make sure that everything's good when you do the paperwork, is when I was looking at the back, your request for the waiver, right? On the back of it, it says, "I'm writing to notify you my intentions to apply for a building permit for a 36 by 60 barn." So I just want to make sure with Jen, because according to the picture that I'm looking at, it's also got the overhead.
Yeah.
So technically, do we need to make sure that that's going to stay 56 feet wide instead of the 36 feet wide? Because those overhangs are attached to the building.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, it is the disturbed area, so that's, that's really what triggers it over that 2,000 threshold, so for consistency, that's fine.
Right, so I just want to make sure that we get that in there, so everything's covered.
So when I fill out the building permit application, you're saying I make it 56 by 60?
It should be 56 feet wide, right? Because those overhangs are included as part of the overall building width.
All right.
I just wanted to comment to Mr. Marshon. Those are actually two separate documents, I just printed stuff out double-sided, so that we save paper.
Like I said, I just saw the difference, and I was just making sure everything is done appropriately, so she doesn't have any conflict of interest down the road.
Okay. Thank you.
So you do need to take up the waiver request, if you want to grant the waiver for the full major site plan.
I'll make a motion that we grant the waiver.
Second. Mr. Doggett? Mr. Guide, and then, oh, sorry.
No, 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 I have that. However, we want to make sure that we're following the new state laws. So in granting the waiver, you're finding, in fact, that she met the four criteria for the waiver.
Can you please state the four criteria, please?
The granting of the waiver will not the granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare, or interest to other property, and will promote the public interest. The waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the Newton zoning ordinance, Newton master plan, or official map. Such waivers will substantively, substantially secure the objective standards and requirements of those regulations, and the board may grant a waiver from any portion of these regulations when, in the opinion of the majority. Remember, the board present voting find that a strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the application, and the granting of the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any
I believe it falls, it's, it's good with all that.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And Ms. Rowden, you had two recommended, recommended, recommended conditions.
Actually, one is not a condition. One was just a recommendation to verify that the intent is for private use, which I think the applicant did already address. And that the best management practices, as specified by the Department of Agriculture, Markets, and Foods, for manure storage be followed. And that URL for that document is in my letter for reference.
Do we, do we have any more questions for the applicant? Anybody from the public? Sorry, can you just please go up to the microphone, please, and state your name for the record? Thank you. Do you think they could turn the mics down? They seem overly sunset.
We don't have a lot of feedback.
Yeah.
It's possible it's just yours, because
Maybe it's me.
My name's Amanda Comtois, I live at 47 Highland Street. So I just have some questions. If it's for private use, how many horses are we roughly planning on having at this location?
It has six.
So roughly, how many horses will you have there?
Six.
Okay.
Just for, because we have people on Zoom, if you want to, do you have like a large list?
Yeah, I just have some, some things that I was like looking up with, with all of this happening.
Sure, I guess, I'll try to write it down, and then the applicant can come up and address your comments or concerns.
So just, just how many horses are we planning on having there? And I just have some other concerns, too, that I've been looking up, and I've also talked to a couple realtors as well. With having these horses there, and it actually just, the property touches my property. Like, in, in most cases, what the realtors have said is that it doesn't really depreciate the value of your home, but it deters buyers from buying your home, which in return is likely to decrease, for you to have to decrease the property value in order for, for somebody to buy it. So that is really a big issue for me. We've lived in the area for like 12, over 12 years now. We spend a great deal of our time out in the backyard, and having a farm or horses is going to have a smell. It's going to increase insects to the area. I looked it up, that one 1,000-pound horse usually urinates about 2.4 gallons of urine a day. So now you're talking maybe six horses. Approximately 37 pounds of feces a day. So that's really going to add up pretty quickly. So that's a huge, huge concern for my family and I, that this eventually can get into water supplies. And I have a well. The increased insects also brings more bacteria, larvae, and parasites to the area. They've, at this property, they've taken out a lot of trees over time, which is fine, it created a different look for my entire backyard. But at the last letter that we got in the mail to combine these two properties, the letter stated basically to change the lot lines. It didn't really have this kind of a plan in place. So I didn't really, I didn't really oppose the last plan that they came up with. But I really am kind of against this, because having that smell and everything is just going to ruin what we've worked hard for. What is the other thing that I had? Yeah, just pretty much, those are our concerns, but they're really huge for us. And, and my family and I have invested a lot of time and money, and we pride our property to be nice, and we just, we're looking forward to not having the extra smells, and things that come along with having farm animals, horses. So.
Thank you.
So, that's what I have just to say and ask for right now.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to comment?
John Sylvia, 41 Highland Street, the back of my property, a butts, the location. I've seen a lot of activity back there prepping for this, I've seen what the building looks like, I understand the building structure, I think the building is very tastefully done, and it's going to look really nice when it's completed. I actually also thought about everything my neighbor just said, and that kind of brought me to the best practices for New Hampshire agriculture. And I think, you know, with that condition, I really don't see that there'd be any issue with any of the other things my other neighbor brought up, as long as those best practices are adhered to. And I think the plan is a very nice plan.
Thank you. Ms. Rowden, can you provide any commentary specifically on the depreciation property value slash resale to a butters?
Um, not, not directly. I will say that agriculture is a permitted use throughout all of Newton, so it is a allowed use. And just to address some of the other comments, the best management practices for manure, among the many things that they do address, is storage near water supplies. So because you're on a private well, and most of Newton is on private wells, you are not allowed to store manure within a private well radius, which is only 75 feet. Given the location on the property of the barn, and the proximity that you would have to have your wealth, that has to be fully on your property, the likelihood of manure contaminating your well, or any woman's well, including the own property owners, is very slim. But the manure storage is also intended to help mitigate smells. You know, I personally cannot guarantee you will never smell any manure, but it is intended to help reduce the potential for smell, and also the potential for contamination for groundwater and surface water, that includes drinking water sources. So that, there are a lot of things that go into those best management practices. I do understand your concerns, but I just wanted to bring those two aspects up of that.
And I have one other question. Is, if the applicant was not proposing to construct this structure, is there a limit of the number of horses or livestock?
Newton specifically does not have such regulation. There are, at the state level, densities for animals, but given the proposal on this size lot, six horses is far below that threshold, even if they did not have a structure for them to be contained in.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one comment to make.
Sure.
I think I remember from when you were here to ask some information, that you were intending to put another well in for use at the barn, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that's not in place of your well, that's in addition to your well.
Right. Do you want to address any of the concerns from the public? There was the number of horses, the potential depreciation change and resale desire, and then contamination of water supply, and there was one of the, it was the mention of removal of trees, which is, I think, somewhat outside of the scope of our purview.
As far as depreciation, I understand what you're saying. I, you can't, you don't even really know that.
Sorry, can you
You need to talk into the microphone, sorry.
Thank you.
So, I, I, I understand, and I'm sure that that's, could be a problem, but most people don't even know there's a house where we are. I mean, let alone know a barn would be back there, 708, actually, almost 800 feet from the road. So, I, I mean, yes, it would be listed as a barn, so if they did their research, they would know that there's a barn there. But I also have a very nice property, and I don't want it to smell like horses, and I don't want it to be an eyesore, which is why I'm spending so much money on the barn itself.
Just one other thing I wanted to point out for the butters, is that, so the reason they had to come in today is because this proposal isn't for an agricultural use, it triggers the site plan regulations in Newton. If they were to expand, or to become a horse show arena, or dramatically increase, actually, to increase it all the size of the barn, build another structure, that would trigger this same process. So as an butter, you would also get notified for that. So just so you're aware of, they can't go beyond what they are proposing right now without coming in before the Planning Board for anything related to the agricultural use.
Annie, do you have anything to, any questions or comments?
No, thank you for asking, I, I think I'm good with it. I appreciate the neighbors' input from, from both sides, thank you.
She appreciates the neighbors' inputs from both sides. And is Annie the only person on the call, other than the town? Is there anybody else on the Zoom call, other than Annie? No, thanks, Jen. Do we have any further questions, comments?
Well, I just, I do just want to say one thing. If the, the proposed barn was not the size it is, they wouldn't have had to come here at all. They could have just built one that was, is it, it's less than 1,200?
12, it's 12, 2,000.
Right, right. So if they decided to build a barn less than that, they wouldn't even have had to come here, and there would have been no, no public hearing.
And we're at 2,165 feet?
Right. 1,600, 2,160, it is close to the threshold.
It's close.
So.
Thank you for that clarification.
No other questions? I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
With the conditions?
With the said conditions.
With said conditions.
Mr. Marshon?
Right, do you want me to read what I have on my list?
Yes, please.
Okay, one is obtain all necessary permits. That's the boilerplate. One is to obtain verification of private use only. And a condition subsequent would be to follow NHDOA Market and Food Best Practices for Manure Storage.
And Mr. Marshon, you are, you, or you're amendable to those conditions?
Yes.
That was your intent, thank you. And Mr. Guide, seconded it?
I just took for granted that Jim would go down it after I said that.
Hold on one second. Dennis, you have someone in the audience who I think
Sorry, can you, you have to come up to the mic.
With all the extreme heat that we've had lately, and I know that they're going to practice with the manure stuff that, for the smell, but what happens if the smell becomes really bad? Then, then what do, what do we do as neighbors to this property?
So if, if there is a complaint, you can call the town code enforcement officer, it's the building inspector code enforcement officer, who can do an investigation to see if, and given that, if that was the complaint, would ideally go out and take a smell. If there is a, if there is found that they are not following the best management practices, and it is admittedly a little harder for enforcing a smell ordinance, then if they were truly in violation, that would be a code enforcement action, and the town could do an enforcement action against the property owner for being in violation of what the Planning Board, assuming if they approve this tonight, of what they were approved. And that comes with a monetary fines, potentially.
So, like I said, again, I did call three realty companies today, and one was Remax, and they did tell me that it deters people from buying my home later on, with smells from farms and, and livestock and everything else. So that's going to really play a big part for me later on, when I feel like selling my home down the road, if I do.
So to
So how does that, I mean, I've, I've lived there longer than these folks, and I feel like we've invested a lot to the property, and I don't want that taken away from us.
If the applicant chose to reduce the square footage of the barn by 165 feet, none of us would be in this room right now, and they could build that tomorrow with a building permit. So they could have, I don't know the density, but like 15 horses there, and there would be no public process.
And there would be no mandate for best management practices either. So they chose to come to the town, to follow the, the proper
Right way.
way, to try to manage things, to make sure that they wouldn't be a burden on their neighbors. They don't, like she said, that she didn't want to smell it either. And you do have to realize that most of the town is residential agriculture, and that's allowed. Just about everything is allowed in this town, except for pigs, I think.
No piggeries.
I'm, I'm just, just hoping that, the number one thing for me that's going to ruin my property is smell.
Right. And I'm actually fairly close to this as well, so I may actually, if there is a problem, smell it as well. But, and, and, you know, unfortunately, although I do understand your concern, what we're mainly looking at is the square footage impact of the building, not the intended use of, of what they're doing.
And this is personal use, not for like
Correct.
entertainment or business, for boarding other people's horses and bringing more and more on, right?
Personal use.
Yeah, it's for personal, non-commercial use. I guess they, one could say it's entertainment, but I, I guess it's not for a commercial
Well, I mean, there's, there's other things for like dressage and stuff like that, where you have shows, and you bring people on for events, that's my concern.
Yes, so if, if they were to do that, and I've worked with communities where a barn was proposed, and they exactly had dressage and horse shows, they would have to come back before the Planning Board, before they would be allowed to do that, because of things like parking, any structures, setbacks.
That was another concern, was increased traffic, if that's the case, to and from, I mean, for like three months straight, we had construction vehicles go up and down, up and down, removing tree after tree after tree, and acres of trees. So it's just, I would like to know, as a resident living there, this is not going to keep happening, and it's not going to be like just ongoing, build it up, build it up, build it up, in, in that area. I mean, when is enough enough?
If this were to be approved tonight, they would not be able to expand beyond what they are proposed, which is a six-stall barn. They would not be able to do horse shows, dressage, and that would not be, be what's being permitted or approved tonight, if it is approved tonight.
So it's explicitly stated that it's for personal use, so if there's 300 cars there for a horse show in a year, that would be taken through code enforcement, unless they came here and it got approved. Jen, you said they could build
I still have, I still have my concerns, like, I, I gave my concerns.
You said they couldn't build, but now they technically could build another building that was smaller.
They could build a building that was smaller, yes. The biggest they can build with, if you
Without coming to the Planning Board.
is what they have on their plan right now.
Sure.
I, so are they, let me, let me ask this question. Are they only able to build what they're building now because the lot lines changed?
No.
No.
It has to do with the size of the building.
Okay.
I believe that the basic premises of this ordinance from the very beginning was they wanted to make sure that somebody wasn't building another house on the same piece of property. And that's why people have to come to the Planning Board for that size, just to make sure what they're going to do with it. But they could have built two smaller barns, or three smaller barns on that property, and never would have had to come here, they'd just go get building permits and adhere to the setbacks.
Just, Ms. White made me remember, there is a place in town where they built three bards that are the 1,200 square foot, actually, just under 1,200 square foot each, on like four and a half acres, and they didn't need to come before the Planning Board.
Right.
I think that was before our time.
Yeah, before.
So it's, we're mainly, as I stated before, looking at the size of the structure, not the intended agricultural use. So they could put two 1,200 square foot barns and
So you can look at the agricultural use outside of just the structures. The thing that triggered the site plan review in Newton is the size of this structure. This application, as agriculture, you can look at things beyond just the building, so smell is certainly something relevant, and as you're balancing the applicant's property owner's rights with that of enforcing the zoning ordinance and the butters' rights, you are balancing all of that. So you can take it all into consideration, and that's why the recommendation for the best management practices helps to mitigate the impacts on practices helps to mitigate the impacts on the abutting properties.
I'll, I'll say this. I live on Highland Avenue. I live on the lower end. Well, right on here, across Main Street, those people have horses right there, too. And I can't, from my house, and mine's number eight, a little further down, not that far down, I can't smell the horses. I can't actually smell those horses until I get down here, right on North Street. Once I hit the intersection of Main Street and Highland Street, that's when I can actually just start to smell that smell. And I can also tell you that after working on a farm and stuff like that, for me, you start to get a little bit used to that smell, and it's a kind of a homey smell. It is. And if you ever need free fertilizer, you would be able to, I'm sure she'd be able to help you out, because horse manure makes great fertilizer.
Mr. Chair, this is Annie.
Thank you, Annie. The floor is...
There's, gentlemen would like to say something?
Do... Can you hold on one second, Annie?
Sure.
The floor is yours. Sorry.
It's okay. I just want to make sure that the neighbor, the abutter, understands that any change of use would have to come before the planning board, that this is, I think we need to emphasize that. It isn't just about the structures, it's also about the use. If there were a business use, that would have to come to the planning board for approval. So there's absolutely no way that there could be a legitimate business use without doing that.
Did you hear all that?
Appreciate you talking about this.
So if there's... Right. Right. The applicant can't change the proposed use, if it was approved, to any type of commercial or any change than what's on their application, without coming back in front of the board.
Good evening. I'm, I'm Warren Stalker. I live at 39 Highland Street, and I'm the one who they actually bought the land from, just part of the lot line adjustment a year or so ago. But the only reason why I was convinced to sell it to the McCarthys, because I preferred to see houses versus houses in my backyard, because that was like 45 acres of land out there. And I thought this would be a better use for the, the land and for the town to keep it more agriculture. One comment on the manure. I also have a Christmas tree plantation with over 7,000 trees, and cost of fertilizer these days is over $1,000 a ton. Common horse manure makes good fertilizer. So that might be another alternate, assuming there's no issue with spreading it around for a reuse application to enhance the growth of the trees. So I'm all in favor of going ahead with this project. Thank you.
Just a reminder, you have a motion and a second.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
You are all set. We have a couple more things on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, we just have other agenda items, right?
Yep, we have some board business. I'm not sure if you guys want to stick, stick around for this, be entertained, or if you guys want to take off, and we can take a short recess.
Thank you for coming tonight. Hi, John.
Thank you all for coming.
Good to see you.
By the way, just so you know, in doing some research for the other board...
If you do have any issues, see the code enforcement board, and then...
They're my law.
We'll talk and we'll make sure. But...
I have someone else that's gonna look into some further things for us. Is it finalized tonight, or is it, can there be an extension?
So, for the approval that was tonight, so as an abutter, you do have 30 days to appeal the planning board's decision.
30 days?
You have 30 days to appeal the planning board's decision to the zoning board.
Yeah.
After that, it would have to be done through Superior Court. It's outside of the town's purview at that point. If you have an issue, it's the code enforcement officer to contact as your first contact.
And who was that again?
Robert Donovan. He is, is he downstairs?
His car was out there, too.
Yeah, his office is downstairs.
But technically, as of this evening, they did receive approval. Jim will give them their notice of decision. Okay.
I did hear that happen. Like I said, I just have other, other things that I was looking into. I didn't receive my letter until I think Thursday or Friday, and there was a lot going on, it was past weekend and everything. I don't really know how many other neighbors actually got their letters in time to actually make an appearance or do anything this evening. So, I mean, there's a lot of us that live right there, and I think that it's all gonna come into effect. I grew up as a kid on a horse farm, and the smell is atrocious in the hot weather. And with these last three weeks, that smell would just be unlivable if there's gonna be a lot of horses there. And I can see it turning into a business. My other complaint would be that there's two other properties, or like, there's two neighbors right there that use their properties as junkyards, let's just say. That's also irritating. And then there's also two other buildings that were put on our street that were so-called not gonna be used for business, but...
That, that would be...
No, no, I just wanted to know how to go about doing this. It's concerning for me.
That's, so all the, with the exception of the applicant that was here, the other complaints or concerns that you have?
Who do I, who do I call if they believe their business is not actual for personal use, which I believe this is gonna become over time?
So that, those concerns would be voiced through the code enforcement, and...
So Bob Donovan is the code enforcement.
And do you have his phone number?
No, it should be on the timeline.
Area code 603-382-4405, extension 316.
And then he can, he'll check into that, and if they're using it, other than, if they had come here to apply for a business, then he can enforce it, and then things can be addressed and taken care of that way.
There's people that own mulch company in Platteville?
Yeah, exactly.
And they have big 18-wheelers coming in and out of there all the time, and they use that as, I think, storage for their mulch company. And then down the road where the old ship used to be in the front yard, that property just built a huge garage. And now I have people stopping me when I'm outside in front of my house working, asking me where the property is, so they can get work done on their vehicles or their motorcycles and such. So I mean, like, over time, like, things have happened in the area where people are using these, these approved situations for business. And it's not becoming fair to everybody else that pays taxes. If they are truly a business, they should be paying the tax rate that they deserve, and, and making it a less, less impactful towards residents who have been living there for a long time. It's just very frustrating.
Yep, nope, exactly. But get, like I said, give Mr. Donovan a call, and ask him to check into all those concerns that you have about those businesses. And if you have an issue, you can come see me, select me and Marshon, and we'll sit down and we'll talk about it.
Okay.
All right? You're welcome.
Okay. Next on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes from July 26, 2022.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We'll give it to Mr. Piper.
I, I motioned.
That was Ms. White and Mr. Piper, right? Uh, Mr., Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
I'm going to abstain because I was not present. These are for the minutes, right?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Piper?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That is actually unanimous.
Next, we have approval, approval of the NEPR manifest for $233.30.
Before we motion to approve for that, Jim, did they, did you send out the letter for the...
Yes, I, I sent it to his engineer, which is who I communicate with.
Yep.
Have heard nothing in two weeks.
Any advice?
So as far as processing with their application, so one of the very specific requirements of all applications is that all fees are paid. Your escrow account, or your NEPR account is one of those fees. So technically, you could deny an application for that. I'm not recommending that at this point. You definitely want to give as much assistance in letting the applicant know what the, what the issue is. So if they come to the meeting at the next, at the next meeting when they are slated to come, you certainly should bring it up. And you can state that until such time as you have that topped off, you know, additional fees for my review, your town engineer review cannot happen. It would be best to try to reach out probably again, or at a certain point before that, to...
I guess that's what I'm getting at. So if they don't deposit any more money, or give Jim any more money in their NEPR account, but they submit updated plans, like they planned to, and he doesn't have enough money to disseminate these plans, that's where I'm going. Like, they're gonna show up, and we're gonna be like, we have nothing.
So as, as your consultant, and the way you have your structures, you could technically tell me to, one of the reasons you collect that money is because you know, you know, it's gonna take your town engineer a certain amount of time, it's gonna take me some time to review things, and then you're not having to chase applicants for whatever funds they owe you that they end up paying to that third party. If you don't have that, because it's part of your policies and procedures, they technically are not following your application requirements. So you can tell me to not review stuff, because you know you don't have any funds left, so that you're then not chasing someone to pay.
So that we could actually send them a letter saying that unless we receive that $2,000 to top it off, that no, nothing's gonna go forward at this next meeting, because it's unable to, because the consultants that we have looking everything over are not gonna be able to be paid.
I would almost word it saying that we told her not to look at it unless this money's deposited.
Well, that's... So, so think of it this way. You, for applications such as what you have, you want engineering review. You know that you want that. You look for my review as well, if you wanted a wetland scientist to review that. Will you have the information you need at the next meeting to be able to make a decision? If one of the pieces of information that you need is review of your own consultants, then you will not have that to be able to make a decision. So in the end, your decision may be to deny an application for lack of information, not because of merit, because of information.
Right. So are they on the agenda for next meeting?
Yes, they asked for a continuance to the next meeting.
Yeah, because they, they requested an extension, because it's past the 65 days.
I will be sending out Thursday the non-certified, updated notice to all of the abutters from their original, abutters list. They did not supply me with any labels. So I had to use the pre-existing, luckily I make a copy of the labels when they come in, and printed them off. That will be going out, and I believe that will leave, I'd have to look at it to be certain, but I believe that will leave like $190 in their NEPR account.
So my suggestion is this, that we spell out 1, 2, 3, that we go back to the meeting where Tom was here, and we specifically said to Tom at the end of the meeting, you brought up that we needed more money in the NEPR account. Put that in the letter. Then we also sent you a second written form telling you we needed money in the NEPR account. This is your third notification. If no money is received before the beginning of the next meeting, we will be unable to address your needs or concerns for your application. Period.
It's actually in the minutes.
Quite honestly, I think you couldn't do that, because you're, you're past the 65 day?
Yeah, you could state that the lack of funds will need to be addressed prior to a decision being made at the date that they've requested to come down.
Put it that way, but either way, that way there, it's spelt out to where they've been notified three times that we need money in the account.
And by the way, the person in the audience at the last meeting was that applicant's daughter?
Yep. Yeah, she was here, too, right?
Right, so...
Exactly. This will be their third, third strike. Boom.
We obligated, we're not obligated to, to hold their hand?
No, we're going above and beyond the call of duty by sending them the letter.
You are obligated to provide information and to help applicants understand the process. That does not mean that, I'm gonna be facetious here, you have to also hold the pen as they sign the check. So you have to help them, you have to assist them. So documenting the number of times that you have been in communication and notified them, do it more than once, which you have. You're doing it again.
Right, because we actually don't, we don't really have any corroboration that the person who was told that on the way out the last meeting actually gave that message to the person who was supposed to put the money in there. I mean, we don't know for sure that, that message ever got through.
However, that person claims, and that applicant has stated, that he is his agent.
Okay.
Just as my sending the engineer the letter from the, you know, from the board, asking, that is the normal...
Right.
Channel of communications with that particular applicant.
All right, yeah. I think we do need to, to send that letter and let them know that we, we can't go forward.
It might make sense...
How did you, how did you word that when you said that?
Oh, for the, the last notification, that you would have to take up that at their next appearance, or next scheduled agenda appearance. I forget exactly how I worded it.
Do you, I'm gonna just, I can type something. Just like, per the July 26, 22nd, July 26, 2022 meeting, the applicant agreed to deposit an additional $2,000 into the NEPR manifest if these funds have not been deposited prior to whatever the next hearing is.
I don't know, I almost would say new plans.
I would say they, they are required to be deposited or provided to the town by your next appearance before the planning board. I forget the exact date, but...
And my quick question to you, Jen, is, well, you said that it's been over the 65 days, right? So they're redoing their plans to fall in line with the thing?
So my understanding is they have stated they may change their plans. That would still require variances, but to be more conforming, so require less variances. But to date, the planning board has not seen any changes. I have only heard this through seeing the minutes at the zoning board meeting. So I do not have, I do not have new plan sets. You do not have new plan sets. You are right now still working with what they have submitted to the planning board.
Yeah, I think they said there was septic and wells that they had to change in the plans.
So we are still waiting on, per the planning board's process and discussion you have had, changes they were going to want to make. It's one of the reasons they asked for continuance, based on some of the denials that they had from the zoning board, which is, that it's perfectly reasonable that they requested that. It was reasonable that you granted the extension. At this point, though, they have asked for... the extension. At this point, though, they have asked for those extensions. Whether you want to continue to grant it, take that up when they come before you at the next meeting, as you have noticed that public hearing too, but those extensions at this point are to protect them. They, they could force you to make a decision. They could have forced you to make a decision during the 65-day clock. They requested a continuance because it is to their benefit to not have to reapply.
Sure, because they were waiting for more information from the zoning board.
Correct. At a certain point, maybe it's the next meeting, maybe it's something farther out, it has been such a long period of time, and if they come in with totally new plans, that you may need to make a decision if, if the application you have before you is complete, well, you've already decided it's complete, whether or not you can approve it, or if you just are finding that you do not have the information you need to be able to make a decision. Or if they, you get all through the planning board process and they need variances, you have a condition on there that they get whatever variances they may need. If they get them, fine. If they don't get them, then your approval kind of becomes a moot point.
So my question is this, don't, it doesn't even have to be them, but if somebody was to go under all this thing, right, so they're, they're looking for a site plan change. So does this trigger a major site plan change to where now we are no longer talking about what has come before us, and this would then have to be picked up as a new process? You know what I'm saying?
Oh, because there is such a change midstream?
Exactly, because now all that's changed.
That's what I was gonna ask.
That, that is a very tricky question, and it's very case-specific. I, I have had towns where that's happened, and it is, I'm gonna say dramatically different from what was originally applied for. And I've had cases where the planning board, because they understood the full extent of why it changed, they just continued through the process. And I've also seen planning boards say, "Come back with a new application with all of the information. We want it as a clean break." So it could go either way. It's a, you guys will have to make a call of what is too much.
So that's, I just wanted to put that out for food for thought, so that everybody was aware of that.
So it would be our decision at that point in time, if it's so drastically changed, that we could say, "Okay, fine, we're gonna deny this application that was before us, and now we're going, you're gonna have to reapply with this new one"? Is that what you're saying?
You can make a, you could base a denial on the application because all of the information you has received does not conform with what the actual application has become.
Which is in fact what has happened.
Well, we don't know that yet. We haven't seen anything yet.
I, I wouldn't...
They told us what they want, what they're thinking about doing, but...
Well, it's good that you're paying attention to what's going on with the zoning board. To a certain extent, ignore what is going on with the zoning board. That, that's my advice. It, it gets too complicated if you, if you don't ignore what's going on with them.
And the other possible outcome is the applicant rescinds their application in front of the board?
They could actually, they could absolutely do that.
And then, then they would, or then if they were to move forward, the applicant, there would be a new application. It may be very similar.
And they can absolutely do that. If they, particularly if they need a little bit more time to figure out what they're doing because they get their variances, or they don't get their variances, or they decide they need to change components.
I have a, I have a technical question. I'm not sure. Okay, if we send out this non-certified abutters notice, just because it's been so many times that it's been continued, so that the people know that it's still kind of on the table, and then they come to us with a new application, is that going to cover that, or does, do we then need to send out certified?
If they were to...
Because it's a new plan?
If they, there's, so if they come with revisions, that is not a new application.
Okay.
If they rescind their application, then anything new would have to be renoticed. It's like the process starts all over. If you were to choose to deny the application because all of the information you have with whatever redesign they may be considering, that would be the reason for your denial. And for planning boards, applicants can reapply with very similar applications. It's the zoning board. They can't keep applying with very similar applications.
Okay.
So planning boards, they can apply, you know, right now they're proposing three buildings. If they wanted to propose six buildings with a revision, that's fine, or a new application, that's fine. It's just you guys are gonna come to a point where you may need to make a decision of what information you have before you maybe isn't in conformance with what they are now proposing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the, um...
Wait, hold, hold up, hold on a second, please. This is Annie.
Go ahead, Annie.
With this, um...
Annie, could you speak a little louder, because it's really hard for us to hear you?
I'm, I'm doing the best I can. Um, I'm sorry, my computer is stuck and I have to go in for repair. I'm on a phone. Um, can you hear me?
Not well.
Okay, my concern is that if the money is not added to the escrow fund way before this next meeting, we will not be able to have the reviews done or, and know that we can pay for them. So there is almost, telling them to have it in before the next meeting, you know, before they come, is not early enough, in my opinion.
Did everybody hear what she said?
I had, no.
She said if the money's not, the, the money needs to be in there now, she said, because it's not, we can't pay her to do it with no money in there. It's her opinion. We can't go negative. So we need the money now. Am I right, Annie?
Yes. I will say, I can still review it. It's just who ends up paying the bill.
Right, and that, and one of the reasons why we ended up starting with NEPRA funds is so that we wouldn't be, that the town would need to pay it, and then they would have to get the money themselves. The, the money needs to be in the account upfront.
What could happen is, she could review it, the applicant withdraws, we're stuck, sorry, with a check for, or a bill for a thousand bucks.
No, technically, you can still charge them the money, but you're stuck chasing them.
Yeah, they may never pay it.
There you go.
Well, that would mean they never build again in Newton, so...
Different LLC comes in, and we can't discriminate from that.
So back to business, I'm gonna make a motion that we sign the manifest for $233.31.
Second. Mr. Mashon, you moved. Thank you. Who seconded?
I did, Dan.
Thank you. Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I apologize for the notes on the bottom of the page.
Do we need to make a motion to send a letter again? No? Okay.
However, I will draft something and send it to Mr. Moran.
To send over to...
I think it needs, I think it needs to have some date on it, that we have to receive it by a certain date, which should not be the same date as the meeting. It should be before that.
Well, if you don't receive it before the meeting, it may delay review of his application by the planning board.
Right, and that, we should probably put that in the, in the mid, in the...
And you need a week to review this.
I was gonna say, so when do you get stuff by, and when do you give us our answer? Like, so you know we're gonna meet in two weeks. When do, when's like the last minute you want it to review it?
Realistically, I'm on vacation next week, so I wouldn't get to, unless I get it this week, I will not get to it until the 22nd.
However...
We can mandate it for Friday.
Any new paperwork that needed to be disseminated to the board would have to be in by next Monday in order to be able, to be gotten to you all.
Right.
So that you have it with enough time to review it.
Sure.
So technically, next Monday should be the drop dead date for the check.
Very good.
It also gives time for it to clear.
Okay. All right.
I agree.
And you wanna do this review on Monday after you get back from a week?
Sure. You, you're only gonna get it via email.
I just don't wanna set, set un, like unreasonable expectations on your side, too.
I, I will do my best to be able to review it within the allotted time. I will at least endeavor to give any high level.
And that'll give enough time for KW to review as well.
I can't speak for Mike and Kelly.
Well, yeah, I'm, I was kinda looking at Jim, but that'll give the towns engineer enough time to take a look at the application, if it does come in.
If they have any new, new, new plan or change.
I have to be careful about what I can say because I have knowledge from my other position that unless the board actually requests it...
Just say, "I don't know" then.
No, yeah. That's fine. Okay.
No, I mean, it's, it's public knowledge. It's all, it's all public, public record, but I don't wanna be accused of instigating.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll put a letter together saying that they need to deposit the funds by Monday the 16th. I think that was the day.
15th.
15th. Thank you, Annie. I couldn't pull it up fast enough. And we don't need a motion for that. It's just, that'll happen.
Yep.
And then I think the floor is yours now, Jen.
Okay, if you guys will bear with me, I have two different things, and only one of them's actually on the agenda. The first one is some grant application information that has come out of the state, and I'll try to go through this fairly succinctly. The other is some state laws that have changed, that we're gonna have to do a few minor amendments to your zoning. But, so as part of the COVID relief funds the state has gotten, one of the things that has been, it has been put towards is increasing housing opportunity around the state. The short summary is that there's about 20,000 units in the state that are needed to meet the affordable housing criteria. Affordable housing is, and at least this part, is a home that costs about $325,000, or rent for a two-bedroom apartment that is no more than $1,800. That has to include utilities and mortgage and/or rent. So electricity, heat. So that's the affordability threshold. Invest New Hampshire is the state's funds that are aimed at trying to increase affordable housing. A portion of it, that's $5 million, has been allocated to help municipalities update regulations, understand data, make changes to their zoning or master plans that help to identify barriers to affordable housing, understand the housing needs of their communities, including the regional housing needs assessment that my office is currently working on. It is due out in December to analyze zoning opportunities. So are there small changes you can make to your existing zoning ordinances or regulations? Are there new ones you could adopt? Are there ones that you have on the books that you may wanna consider doing away with because they some, for different reasons, hinder housing development? So there are two sets of zoning, I'm sorry, two sets of grants that have come out. The first one is the Community Housing Navigators Grant. This is six grants that are being out, given out for up to $250,000. They are really geared towards municipalities or regional planning commissions or regional housing coalitions, workforce housing coalitions, to add staff capacity to help with the zoning changes potentially. Community outreach is a big component, and then to work with developers and landowners to help identify projects to increase housing. They can be applied for with towns working together. One of the things that the RPC is working on with the Seacoast Workforce Housing Coalition that covers sort of Stratford and Rockingham County, is to see if there are groupings of municipalities that may be interested in applying. So if Newton is maybe interested, please let me know. That's not specifically what I'm here to talk about with the planning board, however, because the other grants that are available are the housing opportunity grants, and there are three different options within them that you could apply for one or all three. One is doing a regulatory audit to identify your housing regulations, what barriers you might have. The next one is doing master planning work and data gathering. So taking the report my office is doing, that will have the basic numbers in it, and then doing a more refined data analysis that would be doing things like looking at the really specific rent costs of different properties in town, getting a better sense of how many accessory dwellings or possibly illegal apartments that you may have that also can count towards housing. So doing a much deeper dive than we can do through the regional housing needs assessment. So the master planning component might be a really good fit for Newton, given where you guys are with your master plan. So you've got the start with the survey and the vision chapters, and then working on the land use chapter. So you, you're in a good spot to take on the housing component of your master plan, or you will be in the next few months. You could also do the regulatory audit at the same time. You certainly have some fairly minor things that you could do to your zoning ordinances that would increase housing opportunity without making, making major impacts to Newton. Some of the things that fit into that category are increasing the number of accessory dwelling units you can have in certain areas, or increasing the number of housing units you allow on a lot. You can make other adjustments for density in certain areas of town that don't really change the look and feel of the town. They would not result in major housing developments, but every unit of housing is a unit of housing. So there, there are things like that that can be done on a smaller scale, and then you can go very dramatic with major overhauls of zoning ordinances. So there's sort of that spectrum of planning, identifying, and then implementing regulations, all of which would need to have some education and outreach component under the purview of this grant. And the amount of money that is available for each of those, for the deep dive for data and master plan work, it's up to $25,000. For the auditing component and identifying regulations that could be changed, that's up to $50,000. And then the actually trying to get those regulations adopted is up to $100,000. I truly don't think Newton would need anywhere near those maximums. You would still need to do some education and outreach, no matter what phase you might consider applying for. The applications are due starting, it's a rolling application basis, so you could apply tomorrow. The information only came out on Friday. It's a rolling basis. It's up for two years. I would encourage any consideration of applying in the next month or two. There is no match requirement. There is participation requirement.
That was gonna be my next question. Is it matching?
There is no matching. The one, I'm gonna say the big carrot, is the goal of this work is to increase housing opportunities. It doesn't have to be affordable housing, per se. It's to increase housing opportunities. So you, you can't really use the funds to completely overhaul your zoning, so the only thing you're gonna allow is 55-plus or luxury mansions. That's sort of the one caveat to, that's the big string. And you have to spend it within, it's about a two-year time period.
And any changes have to be voted on, correct? Any changes?
It depends on what the, it depends on what the, if it's zoning, yes. If it's site plan or subdivision regulation, no.
And site plan would be like the amount of accessory dwellings?
Uh, no, that would be zoning. So site plan might be, you might allow smaller multifamily. So you might allow units between three units and six units for a site plan development to have a less stringent set of requirements that they have to submit, or information they have to submit, because it's based on...
To help enhance or promote the development of housing.
Correct, because, or something a few towns are considering, and this isn't even planning board, it's actually select board, is changing the building code requirements for units between... between, for residential units between three and six units using the residential building code as opposed to the international building code because it makes the fire suppression requirements less, so the building cost is less. So there are a variety of things. There's also tax incentive financing districts. They're economic development districts or called TIF districts. That is a joint venture really between a planning board and a select board that needs to happen, and that has to get voted for by the voters. So there's a lot of different things to consider. You know, I'm obviously emphasizing more of the zoning aspect because you're the planning board, but I can send this information out for you guys to take a look at. It's, like I said, it's just come out. There's a webinar on next month.
It's not the one tomorrow at nine?
No, the one tomorrow at nine is about the zoning things I'm going to talk about, on Tuesday, August 16th. So I can send that out to people if they want to take a look along with the links. But it's a really good opportunity, even if all you apply for is one small component. Take advantage of it because your ordinance, your master plan already says more housing, increased diversity, so.
I have a question. Would it help to ask for this grant, would it help with rewriting portions of the ordinance at all? Because I'm thinking that one of the ways that we could maximize housing would be to say, okay, put it in for the vote to the people that now we could allow detached accessory buildings.
So detached accessory dwellings, whether you want to do it in any structure built before 2017 when you adopted your accessory dwelling ordinance or any detached, that's one, detached accessory dwellings are one of the easiest ways for more rural communities to increase housing in a way that is not going to dramatically change the look and feel of your town, especially if you have like sort of a lot size trigger, you know, if your lot's greater than half an acre, you're allowed to do it, or if it's got an existing structure that was there before 2017, something along those lines.
Because I know that we had the choice whether we were going to do attached or detached or both, and we decided to do attached to see how it went. But I know that they, in the past, there have been some people who wanted to do detached. They've got a garage. They want to change it. I actually remember in the past, and I don't think that person ever came back around or anything, they've already got another building that's an apartment that they, that's been there for a very long time. So.
So yes, detached is certainly one of those things you can work on. If that's the only thing you're interested in doing, I can work with that without applying for the grant. That's just something I can do through, through your writer. That's not a complicated one.
One other question. If we applied for this grant and we received $10,000, actually, let me rephrase that, $8,000. I'm going to pick a number less than 10. Do we have to put it out to bid?
You, the, one of the.
You have to ask this gentleman.
Well, actually, one of the requirements through the grant funder, though, is that you use a consultant that has been pre-screened to be able to do this work. The planning commissions are already approved to do this work. There are certainly other consultants out there that also do it, but because it's a grant that usually doesn't go through a bid process in any town. It's not a RFQ. It's purely a grant.
Perfect.
Supposedly, these grants, like you're talking about, were, from my understanding, they've set it aside proportionately for all towns in the entire state of New Hampshire so that everybody could supposedly get a portion to be able to do this?
This is a competitive grant process for, I think the part of the Invest New Hampshire that is true.
Yep.
This is a competitive grant process. There is a lot of funding. So, you know, the real reality that most towns can get some funding is very high.
Right. The whole idea is, and the big push for this is because the state of New Hampshire is in severe lack of being able to fulfill its labor force, and thus they are pushing this to get more housing in this state so that we can fulfill these roles with all the job opportunities that we have with the expansion up here in the state of New Hampshire. And that's why they are coming out with this money because so far they've talked about it, but they haven't been able to get the housing developments that we need to be able to get the people up here to be able to fill those job roles, and that's what's hurting our economy up here.
Right.
I will say the one thing that this does not require, while it's aimed to increase housing opportunities certainly, it does not require that you approve 300-unit apartment complexes that some other towns are seeing applications for. So you can tailor it to fit your municipality, but the goal is to do outreach to get people to understand the problem Mr. Shon just spoke of and how it can be dealt with by Newton or by any other municipality to fit multiple benefits. So.
One thing in reference to your, you know, we apply for 8,000, and does it have to be competitive? Not only, I believe, I understand Ms. Rowden correctly, but there's also, it's, I believe, a two-year timeframe during which you have to spend it. So it's not like, if you ask for $8,000 because you want to cover certain changes to the ordinances and you expect that, you know, you'll do certain amount this year, certain amount the following year, you are able to carry it over.
The other aspect is that I believe financially it would work, that town doesn't get the money. The town is awarded the money to work through, it's Planned New Hampshire who's being the administrator of the funds to then pay the consultant, whoever you might hire. So the funds never actually pass through Newton accounts, even though you are getting the benefit of the work from the consultant.
Is it, is it anything that's like matching work?
Nope.
Okay. All right.
I mean, you are obligated to participate, and that's one of the requirements of the documentation of the application. But you are expected to work with whomever on whatever the application is, and it gets passed, the money gets passed through to the consultant to do the work with the municipality.
I would say at the least we would definitely benefit from getting the part like Jen's talking about to be able to help further endeavor CIP.
So this can't help with the CIP?
Well.
This can help with the master plan.
That's what I mean, the master plan as far as being able for the developments. That's what I mean.
Okay.
So that being said, it seems like we have a little bit of interest in looking into this further.
Yep.
Do we pass this to Trish, even though she seems to be like the grant liaison for the community?
Quite honestly, I believe Ms. Rowden is probably the best person.
Yeah. So one of the things that we are going to be doing for a lot of our municipalities is either helping them write the grant application or we will write on their behalf with their understanding that if they were selected, they would use us.
Perfect.
Let me say thank you in advance, then.
It's not a complicated grant application. So what I can do is I can put together sort of a very short, bulleted, recommended scope of work for you to consider at your next meeting. I'll have to look through, I think it would have to be the select board that would ultimately have to approve the applying, but I would need a reference or a letter of recommendation from you guys to do it, to see if you're comfortable with that scope of work and that proposal. I will only be able to put together sort of that bulleted list before your next meeting because of my vacation. But if you're comfortable with that, then we can move forward to a more detailed scope for the select board to consider.
Okay.
Does that? That sounds great. Does that seem reasonable? Okay.
Sure. And I will be attending next Wednesday's webinar, just as I'm attending one tomorrow for the changes to the lay juice laws.
Which, if it's okay, can I segue over to that for folks?
Yes, please.
Okay. So there were changes to planning and zoning laws based on the last legislative session, and there are quite a few. There's a summary, I'm pretty sure Jim has sent this out. There are some that very specifically will have to tweak in Newton for your zoning ordinances, and that is your elderly open space ordinance for, sorry, your 55-plus development that Sergeant Woods came under. And what that does is we have to allow that regulation to be able to have a development that can be for all ages, for inclusionary housing or workforce housing. The actual language we need to add to that zoning ordinance is a clause. It's a couple of words. The pitching that to why we have to do it, it's a statute, so you have to do it. If you don't do it, it just defaults to the state law. The wording is very simple. The what has to go to warrant is pretty simple. It's not complicated to understand, but the impact is potentially pretty profound. If someone were to come in with a cluster subdivision, so this is having smaller units and conserving more land, it could be not just a 55-plus. It could be for all ages. So the only difference between your 55-plus ordinance and how this would change is that you would not have within that development a deed restriction, that it can only be for people that are 55-plus. The reason for that 55-plus is the intention is that they will not have any kids in the school. So they get a tax exemption from paying the school tax. They still pay property tax. They don't pay the school tax. That would not be the case with the all ages.
I was just going to say, in Newton, they still pay the school tax.
Oh, okay.
What they don't pay is they do not pay the school impact fee when it comes to building the structures. They, before anybody out there starts thinking that, like people in Sergeant Woods, I'm paying property, the school tax.
Thank you for the clarification.
So that is the impact. The one other thing just to note is that currently you have, when you take jurisdiction of an application, you have 65 days to make a decision unless there is an extension that the applicant agrees to. You guys are familiar with that process. If you do not make a decision within that 65 days and the applicant does not agree to an extension, the legislative body, in this case, the select board, has to automatically approve that application. It's a pretty big change. I don't think it will ever really come up, but it is something to be aware of.
Can you say, start from the beginning and say it one more time?
You accept jurisdiction of an application. You have 65 days under state law to make a decision, to approve, deny, conditionally approve. If you do not make a decision within those 65 days and the applicant has not agreed to an extension, if you do not make a decision, the select board automatically has to deem that application complete and approved.
Whoa.
So if the planning board drops the ball, they got approved?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So these are changes that we need to make to our ordinance, so we'll have to have that.
Only the first one with the 55-plus. This is not, this is a procedural one. You don't have to change your regulations, but it is an important process step to be aware of.
Sure.
Would need to be changed in the policies and procedures manual.
Okay.
You're pretty involved. What's the why? Why did they change it?
I don't have an answer for you, to be honest.
Probably because some boards haven't made timely decisions.
I think boards were dragging their feet. There was already a provision in there if a board didn't take its, didn't make a decision within that 65-day clock, that could drag it out another 30 days. And I think that was just felt to be too long, too cumbersome. Why should you make, because the planning board dropped the ball, why should you make the applicant also pay with time?
I have two questions. Is there a time limit on the extension?
No.
Okay, so that could be indefinite.
And that has always been the case.
And the second question is, if the planning board dropped the ball, the Board of Select would have approved it by default, can it be contested?
It should, and I don't know this 100%, but it should still be able to be appealed in the normal appeal process of any aggrieved party, which is the 30 days.
Thanks.
I have a quick question about workforce housing.
Yeah.
Okay. I was looking at some of the numbers, I think your report from the RPC. I was looking at some of that, and I understand what the base is for the workforce housing and everything. What I'd like to know is if the, say if they're going to be rented, if the landlord is supposed to keep it to this amount of money, who is going to make sure that they don't say, okay, yes, it's going to be this much money for you to rent this because it's under this umbrella? And how do you know that they, they're not going to increase it and increase it and increase it? I mean, who goes and does and check that and let them know?
So there are financial checks that can be put in to ensure that that is being followed.
Okay.
There are, there are people who do that for a living and firms that do that for practice.
Okay. All right.
And that gets written in as one of the conditions of approval. With some of the other Invest New Hampshire money that you might hear about, that is being put to help developers build, it's literally being just money to help offset the costs. The obligation for that workforce housing development for that program is it has to be still qualifying as far as price for at least five years, beyond the five years, then it can just be fair market rate.
Okay. And it's, there's a, there's a different percentage for purchasing than renting, if I'm remembering what I read.
There are different thresholds, but the qualifications, it can't be any more than 30% of your after-tax income, and it has to include utilities. That does not include internet or cable. It's heat and electricity.
Yep, just basic utilities.
Yeah.
The developers have it down to a T on how to get their financial models to work to fit that box. It's fascinating.
Also, before an application or before a planning board can consider an application, part of the application process is that they have to submit all the documentation for workforce housing as part of the planning board application.
Yep.
Stating how the rent would be established and how it would be maintained.
Okay.
So another word for it is affordable housing instead of workforce housing. It's to help, like we're talking about the college, the kids coming out of college because of the loans that they have, whatever. That's why the formula is set in place so that it's set for that five-year period so that they can get in, get here, start working, build their lives and help the economy.
The other thing with workforce housing, affordable housing, just to be aware of is when you usually hear something is affordable housing development under, for federal purposes, it has to be 20% of the units are considered affordable. They get some tax incentives for that component. And of the workforce units, whether they're apartments or condos or houses, at least 50% of those units have to have two bedrooms so that they can be occupied by a family. And they can't, so they can't just be all studios and one-bedroom apartments. That, that can be in the mix. It can't be exclusively that to be considered workforce housing.
Okay.
And it cannot have an age restriction.
Also true.
Right.
Has anyone figured out yet how to be able to get out to the public to let them know that workforce housing, affordable housing is not low income? Because people have this stigma and they think that, you know, we're building slums because it's going to be low income, and that's not the process. Why?
That's one of the reasons why there's a lot of money included in these grants for education and outreach. Some of the best practices, though, to talk about, yes, workforce housing is a term you can certainly use in explaining what that really means with the dollar figures. Increasing. Increasing housing diversity and simply more housing also helps. So, we are not, we're not just talking about big mansions, we're not talking about Section 9 slums.
Right.
We're talking about the middle. The smaller single-family homes, the affordable condos, the apartments that you can afford to rent, either as a senior on a fixed income, or a new graduate, or anything in between. So, we're talking about firefighters, teachers, janitors, waitresses, new engineers, new, I'm gonna say new planners, you know, young professionals, to retired seniors, to people downsizing.
Okay.
So, it is, it is the gamut of what is in the middle of affordability in New Hampshire.
And I think that's why they chose to call it workforce housing, to take part of that stigma away of, of the affordable housing-
Right.
-to where people would think the difference.
They think low-income, and they have some picture in their mind, yeah.
Yes, this is not low-income, this is still, you know-
A lot of the larger complexes you see in Massachusetts, like right, I think they've won in Amesbury, right on 150, right before 495.
Yep.
That, there is probably a workforce housing portion of that.
Um, for those of you who know where my office is in downtown Exeter, we're right next to the old town hall. The apartments that are in between, that are behind Exeter's town hall, that is a workforce housing development that was built in about 10, 15 years ago. Some of them are in downtowns and they're small, some of them are big apartments, some of them are cluster small single-family homes. They, they can look and feel very different on a lot of different scales.
Okay, thanks.
So, with that, I am, I am done. I'm gonna send you other things that have changed in state law, just for your own reference, but the big one is just that change with the elderly housing.
That's tomorrow's webinar that I will be attending. I sent you all out a synopsis that came from the NHMA, and I put my comments on the side. There are a couple of things that, like the workforce housing, that was under the, you know, the board needs to think about that. There are certain things that are, this board has actually already been doing, like having the fee structure available online and posted downstairs. Another thing that's gonna happen is that there's gonna be a change to the process, like tonight I had you find facts for the waiver. Part of the, the change is that the wording of motions is gonna have to change, and fact-finding is going to have to be part of your notice of decision in the future. After tomorrow's webinar, I hopefully will have some more materials that I can send out. However, those are internal structural changes that will happen, that I will, when I, I think you all know, I kind of, sort of know in advance what the motion basically is gonna be for certain things. I will be actually asking, and I will probably be the person that does your, these are the facts of the case that determine this outcome, this decision.
Um, that's an interject, but the, the reason for this is that the state law changed so that you have to give more explanation as to why you made a decision, whether approve or deny. You already do that, it's just making sure that it is very clear to any abutter, any applicant as to why the decision that is made was made, and-
But it protects the board.
It, it does protect the board, I mean, that's why Jim's saying, okay, with the waiver, you found that these conditions to be true. It can be that simple. It ju, it does make it a little bit longer for motions and notices of decision. You already had to do it with any denial, the zoning board already has to do it with any decision, it's just doing it more for any approval, any conditional use permit, any waiver, any site plan or subdivision approval, any of those processes, just gonna have to be more specific of, we approve this because it meets the intent of the zoning ordinance blah, or it meets these conditions.
From experience, I've had people appeal an approval, and not here, but professionally, and it was much harder for the board to, or for the community to justify their approval, because the planning board did not do a sufficient job justifying the approval, even though, so on the backend, the private developer had to go through and justify the planning board's approval.
But like I said, that's gonna be, that's more of a process change, very slight. You're gonna do, the planning board, it's gonna be a little closer to the way the ZBA does it, without going into the, you know, reading of criteria, and, you know, Mr. Marshawn, how do you vote, mister? It can be a lot less stringent, but the notices of decision have to be more, a little bit more precise. As I started to say earlier, I found out that when I record my laws, like I'll be doing for your minor site plan, in the past, we either recorded a notice of decision, or we recorded a my law. I just found out that if you record a my law, you, you are supposed to contemporaneously record the notice of decision that goes with it. I was looking up something else, and I went, I never knew this. I always thought the word, that was or, not and. I'm not certain if that was something that changed just in the past couple of voting cycles in Concord, but it means a minor increase in the cost for the-
Right.
-applicant when I, when I go up to record.
Usually it's what, $12 for a page of this size?
Well, yeah, it's $12.60.
Right.
Provided it's only one page.
I'm gonna call the meeting at 8:38.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, Annie.
Good night.
Good night.